Welcome to the Cupertino City Council Candidates Forum. I'm Elaine Manley from the League of Women Voters of Cupertino and Sunnyvale, and tonight's program is sponsored by the AAUW and the League of Women Voters of Cupertino and Sunnyvale. I do need to mention that the League is a nonpartisan nationwide organization, and therefore we do not support candidates or political parties. Our purpose tonight is to make sure citizens are informed for when they go to vote on Tuesday, November 2nd. Now I'd like to introduce the candidates for the council, and we're going to start going in this order. First, we have John Batista, Donald Burnett, Marshall Goldman, Stephen Hayes, and Laura Lee Sorenson. Okay. Now, this evening, the candidates have agreed to a set of ground rules. Basically, they've agreed to time limits, as well as their -- all of their literature is located on that table by the door. It will not be handed out during the forum, so if you'd like to pick some up during the break or afterwards, that's the location to go to. And we do have a timekeeper. Sharon Jenks will be showing the candidates how much time they have left to speak, and we do ask that you abide by that. We're going to have opening statements for two minutes -- excuse me, two minutes, and then we're going to take a 10-minute break, and we'd like to ask you guys to write your questions during the break. Raise your hand. We have people walking around who will pick up the cards. If I can ask those people to raise their hands for me and wave them. You see, lots of people are picking up cards. So, write your questions, get them to those people, and the sooner we can do that, the sooner we can keep the ball rolling. I would like to ask that you write legibly. I do have to read it. I don't want to read it incorrectly. And also, if you could speak to the issues, so that we can hear from all candidates, and that way we get a better view of everyone. And then, the only other thing I need to say is, after the break, we'll get started with the questions. The candidates have a minute and a half to answer, and then approximately 10 minutes before 9:00, we'll go ahead and stop on questions and do the closing statements. So let's go ahead and get started with the opening statements. We have two minutes each, and first, we'll hear from John Batista. Do you have a mic right there if you'd like to use it?
I'll use it.
All right.
Was that in the plan to use the building or not?
No, but that's okay.
Well, it's nice to see so many familiar faces. Cupertino is at an important fork in the road. We are -- we are all here tonight, I think, because we're concerned citizens, and I'm a concerned citizen as well. What we are about to embark on is a choice between two different roads that we can take. One is a road where Cupertino remains primarily a residential community, a community that's focused on safe neighborhoods, safe streets, adequate services for everyone, adequate library services, schools, and park services. The other road that we can take is a road of dense urban development, and that's the road that's reflected in the general plan that was just adopted by city council, if that plan is indeed implemented. That is a road that is jammed, because there's a lot of traffic on that road. It's a road with tall buildings, a road with high-density housing. It's a road that doesn't focus so much on the residents of Cupertino. I, as a candidate, want to make sure that we don't go down that second road. I want to make sure we remain on the first road, but keeping in mind the importance of business in our community and the importance of accommodating the employers in our community. As I mentioned, city council just passed a general plan that was supposed to reflect the interests of our community at large, and I don't believe it does. I've spoken to many residents over the last couple of months in campaigning, and I think it provides for an excessive amount of growth, 50 percent more office space in Cupertino. And this, in fact, is the cause of a lot of our problems. It results in pressure to build higher-density housing. It will overcrowd our schools. In fact, the school districts are talking about a special assessment. It puts more pressure on us to develop affordable housing. I care about Cupertino, and I ask you to consider me for city council. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Don Burnett.
Yes, good evening. I'd like to say that I share John's concern about the general plan. I'll talk about it in a little bit more, what you might say, technical detail. The general plan, with its five-and-a-half million square feet of new development, will create a need for, according to the environmental impact report, 9,800 new housing units. The city plan calls for 2,500, which would be very difficult to achieve all by itself, but even that leaves 7,500 people without housing in Cupertino. In addition to that, when you look at the general plans for nearby cities, they don't have an excess of housing either. As a matter of fact, most of them are planning more job creation and housing. What this means in terms of us in the city is that these people who are coming in to work in these new buildings are going to, in general, have long commutes. Because of that, they're probably going to go right home after their jobs. They're probably not going to shop in Cupertino. They'll go shop out of their homes on weekends. For those who are working in Cupertino now, they're going to have to contend with additional traffic, and for those of us who live here, we're going to have to contend with additional traffic. These are all very practical concerns, I think, and it's not the vision that I want to have for the future of the city. I do not want to live in a dense urban environment, and I am willing to say that a good many of my fellow neighbors feel the same way. That's the primary basis of my candidacy, and I hope, when you consider that and my stance on the other issues that you can get from my literature, that perhaps you'll decide to vote for me on November 2nd. Thank you.
Thank you. Marshall Goldman, yes, you're welcome to come out.
Good evening. I can't believe it's been four years. Seems like it's either been four days or four centuries. I don't know which it is, but it's been a lot of work. Some of you know me. I'm married. I have three children. I've been a resident for 16 years. I'm a graduate of MIT, and I'm a small businessman, being in business for 20 consecutive years. In the last four years, as a member of the city council, we have worked to create a balance that protects our job, protects our neighborhoods, and preserves open space. When we've needed to take a stand, when the hillsides were threatened and nobody was able to come up with a plan, I proposed the hillside protection policy, which is now law, which will work to protect the hillsides if we support it. We've also protected open space through Measure T and joint agreements with the school districts. I've been concerned about Highway 85 impacts our neighborhoods, and as a result, I've insisted on the redesign of Highway 85, so we have full access at Stevens Creek Boulevard. We have sound walls throughout Cupertino, and at the Rainbow area, it goes under De Anza Boulevard and not over it. To make sure we have jobs for the future, we have a general plan that has retained the major companies, allowing them to grow slowly for the next 20 years, but tying that growth to keeping existing levels of traffic the same. In the next four years, I think we need to pursue increased funding for our library, and we need to maintain the safety of our children in our schools and on our streets. We have created a foundation for the future. It's a balanced vision that protects the jobs, protects the neighborhoods, and preserves our open space. I need your support to continue my work. Please vote for me on November 2nd. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now, we have Steve Hayes.
Good evening. Before I go into the issues, I just want to dispel the notion that the only reason why I'm running for city council is so I don't have to do work around the house. My wife and I have been residents for 15 years, and for 10 years, I have been actively involved in the civic affairs of our community and the county at large. I grew up in Palo Alto, educated at the University of San Francisco, degreed in applied economics. My profession for the last 20 years has been in business administration, planning, and operational management. My background, I believe, will be applicable to what our city is going through today, and that is a situation of economic uncertainty. I see that it's not a question of choice whether you're for or against the general plan. This is a city that can have choices. There are alternatives, and I see opportunity. As an individual who had been involved in the Citizen Goals Committee for three years in the effort to come to a consensus on a collaborative basis, the recently adopted general plan may not be the best plan in the world, but it is amendable, and I do have ideas on what needs to be amended. But I believe it was something, a document that was created by consensus and by full participation of our citizens. And what I will do is, as these questions come forward, is try to address them as forthrightly as possible. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Laura Lee Sorenson.
I always say I'm the short one on the council. Good evening. I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for the opportunity to present my views and for making this forum possible. During the past four years, I have worked on your behalf to pass a revision of our general plan. This plan creates a business environment that encourages the creation and preservation of long-term jobs, as well as the preservation of open space, particularly in our hillsides. I also made sure that Cupertino was included in the county mass transit plan, and I most recently initiated a cultural diversity group to address the issues of culture, to ensure our continuing sense of community, which is a major strength of our city. In November, I need your vote to continue to work on your behalf. Specifically, I would like the opportunity to ensure that a balance is maintained between our quality of life and economic development. I recognize our economic dilemma and the fact that we can't do business as usual. I propose an economic development strategy that will encourage a wide range of companies to do business within Cupertino, to employ local residents, and to benefit the larger community through increased tax revenue. This can be done without an increase in building or a lowering of the quality of life in Cupertino. I also recognize the need to expand revenue resources in order to protect such things as our library. As a school nurse in Cupertino, I support the effort to get the zero-tolerance policy enacted to minimize the escalating violence and drug use that threatens our children in our schools and neighborhoods. I have specific ideas on how to achieve what I've just described, and I trust that you will ask questions along this line, and that I'll be able to answer them more fully. Thank you.
We're going to go ahead and get started with the questions, and the first person to answer will be Don Burnett. The question reads, "What is your position on low-to-moderate income housing in Cupertino?"
My position on this type of housing is that Cupertino has a strong need for it and legal obligation to provide some, and I think a moral obligation to try and provide balanced housing. I think this fits in pretty well with the land which is available for housing right now. There's very little land available in the flat part of Cupertino. It's like a little under 100 acres, and to achieve any kind of that 2,500 units or whatever lesser number we can settle for even, is going to require that the housing be built at higher densities, which will tend to make it lower in cost and to meet that strong community need that we have.
Thank you. Marshall Goldman.
Well, with respect to the affordable housing, I don't believe in 100 percent low-income housing projects. I don't think that's a way to solve the problem. I also don't think that these developments, such as the Monovista Hardware site, where a proposal was presented that increased the density 50 percent over a previously approved proposal, was appropriate. I think that if you're going to solve the affordable housing problem, what you need to do is have a range of incomes. That's people that are both low, moderate, and median income, as well as market rate in one development. If you do that, you lessen the issues of -- there are a lot of issues as far as maintenance and some other very practical matters, and plus, the subsidy is not as great. What I have done as chairman of the Affordable Housing Committee is I negotiated a policy that requires the major companies for every 100,000 square feet to build affordable housing, 28 units of affordable housing, which is of a mixed-income approach, on their land, and that will lessen the burden that could be borne by the neighborhoods, and that's the way I would approach it.
Thank you. Stephen Hayes.
Okay. Just as a response, an initial response and point of information is the fact that for our community, for a family of four, middle income is $71,000 a year. So when we're talking about low and moderate income housing, we're really talking about a wide range. In reality, we only have, I believe, less than 20 units in the whole city that's recognized by the state of California at this time, and as a matter of fact, we are not in compliance as it relates to our housing element. Since 1988, the amount of housing that's been built has been very minimal, and the type of housing that's been built has been out of the reach of 95 percent of our community. So there's ample opportunity. As a matter of fact, this year, I believe the latest figure was 19 housing units had been built to date, and that is versus approximately 600 back in 1988. What I believe is that if there is going to be affordable housing in what has been described as subsidized housing, that it has to be done sensitively. It has to be a model for our community. We have not built anything in approximately 14 years. And the last time we built what we could say is innovative housing was for the physically disabled students right off of Stevens Creek, next to De Anza College.
Thank you. Laura Lee Sorenson.
Is my mic on? Cupertino is required by the state to facilitate the building of affordable housing, and I think we made a proper start earlier this year when we asked Mid Peninsula Housing Coalition to look throughout Cupertino to see if there were sites that might be available. And this would be rental housing primarily that could be built for our service workers, such as secretaries. I even had teachers come to the meeting and say that they would qualify. I firmly believe that attractive, affordable housing can be built, and I have seen it built in other cities. An interesting statistic that I discovered, and something that the city manager sent to us recently, was that only 27 percent of this state's counties and cities have adopted a housing element in compliance with the law. That is statewide. Cupertino is not in compliance at the present time. The attorney general recently sent notices to 47 jurisdictions warning them that they were out of compliance. We could be next. We haven't received a notice that I'm aware of. And there are presently five cases making their way through the courts, and as these cases make their way through the courts, they are finding that affordable housing is required by the cities, and the cities are having to build it.
Thank you. John Batista.
Well, I think that's the point of the affordable housing issue is not completely resolved. In fact, in the town of Los Altos, it's quite -- one of the options is the no-option option, and I don't think we, as a community, need to rush into affordable housing. The law is very vague about what's required. And what particularly bothers me about the process, the way affordable housing has been handled so far, is that it has not been, at least the law has not been adequately explained to the residents, and that's led to a lot of confusion between what is and what is not required. So the first thing I will do is to let you know what all the options are and explain those options to you after scrutinizing the law. Again, my point is, I don't believe we need to rush into it or back ourselves into a corner where, because of a state agency, we are required by June or July of next year to do something about it. I oppose the affordable housing on the Monovista site because it means increased density and 100 percent affordable housing. If one of the options should be looking at the feasibility of doing a project that's less than 100 percent density with market rate units, other options could include giving financial incentives to current apartment property owners to turn those units into affordable housing units, thereby beautifying neighborhoods where those apartment houses are already a blight on the neighborhood. That option hasn't been looked at. My last point, there's a lot of options. I don't think we need to rush into it right now.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry, please try to abide by the time limits, if you would. Okay, our next question, we'll start with Marshall Goldman, and the question reads, "What are your views on the new general plan? And secondly, what areas would you change?"
Well, first of all, I voted for the new general plan, so I do support it. It was a compromise. There are a couple areas that I would change. I think that, for example, at the new Apple site, we had a vote as to what the height would be. I voted for 60 feet. The majority of the council voted for 75 feet, so I would have liked to have seen that lower. I think that the major issue with the general plan is to really understand what it's doing. I heard this evening that the general plan is going to require us to build 9,000 homes. That's just not true. Requires us to -- we have actually limited the number of homes for 2,500 units. I also heard that we're in trouble with the state, and they may not pass our housing element. That also, I do not believe to be true. In fact, as a matter of fact, the affordable housing requirements for the major companies are stricter than any city is doing anywhere in the state, and if anything, I believe it will be a model for meeting those requirements. I think that we need to go a little bit further in terms of developing a consensus for the community identity. Everybody wants a community identity, but nobody knows exactly what that's going to be, and what we need to do is -- and we're putting together a process by which people can give input into that. So that's what I would say.
Okay. Thank you. Stephen Hayes.
First of all, I would like to see the hillside policy enhanced to create incentives for developers. As it is now, it's very rigid, and it doesn't provide any incentive for developers to look at full dedication of a sizable portion of their property as public, permanent public open space, so I would like to see that. Secondly, as far as Highway 85, it seems that we neglected to take a look at an opportunity. Next fall, Highway 85 will be open, and the question is, what is the opportunities as it relates to the opening of Highway 85? Traffic congestion has been a problem that's been with this community for years. People fought either to have the freeway put in, others fought opposing it because of the noise and the pollution and splitting our community in half. So there's a lot that needs to be done as it relates to Highway 85, and I'd like to see some incentives rather than disincentives. We talked about housing mitigation. That's a cost to the companies. If they pay the $5 per square foot in Luffy, then that's the cost of doing business. There must be ways to look at creating incentives, and the Santa Clara Valley Housing Fund is one example, as a tax credit. And I think we need to put added emphasis on economic development here or redevelopment. I'm not talking about going out and building high-rises. I'm talking about taking empty buildings and getting employees in there. Thank you.
Thank you. Laura Lee Sorenson.
The new general plan was passed on a 3-2 vote. We worked for three and a half years on it with the input of the community and the input of the Goals Committee. I think we have a workable general plan, and I would hate to see us start trying to mess around with it and do some changes to it. I think we need to give it a chance to see if it will work. In the general plan, we used the vision for Cupertino, which was developed from the community and the businesses and the corporate structure that came through the council. It was a bubble-up operation, and this was incorporated into the general plan as well. We did so much compromising along the way, and I think it's good because we have ensured that the hillsides are protected. We put height limits down in the downtown area. We've put the new building, if there is any new building that is going to go on in the next 10 years, which I somehow doubt, along the freeway, and we've tried to protect the neighborhoods with the general plan, and this was really, I think, our goal all along. Thank you.
Thank you. John Batista.
Well, I think the stakes are too high to experiment. What we have is a general plan that provides, again, for 50 percent more office space. It's 5 million square feet. Now, I'm not a no-growth candidate, but I don't think that we need 5 million square feet to accommodate the employers, especially in a time when they're downsizing. The general plan also provides for building heights in the core area of nearly 10 stories. It provides for buildings along Stevens Creek Boulevard of between 45 and 60 feet high. It provides for 500 homes along Stevens Creek Boulevard, which is already built out, and the only way you're going to do that is by building more apartments or townhomes and high-density projects. This general plan creates a lot of problems. It creates pressure on increased traffic. It creates pressure for high-density housing. It creates pressure to build more affordable housing. It creates pressure to build in the hillsides, and the solution is simply to cut back on the number of space. You know, even if the buildings don't get built, we still have a plan that provides for all this housing. So a theoretical plan that is out of line with reality should be modified. General plans are meant to be modified. There's an annual review process to take care of that fact. I'm not opposed to the whole plan. It's the land use portion of it. The plan's a big document. I have it here, but the land use portion, I believe, is seriously flawed and doesn't maintain Cupertino as primarily a residential community.
Thank you. Don Burnett.
Yes. The 9,800 units, which I referred to, is the need generated. I thought I had stated that before, and not what I expect the state will require. Based on looking at the '83 general plan and what came out of that, it looked like at that time the state would require us to do something like 50 percent of that in order to have an acceptable housing element. The previous housing element was rejected twice by the state. They said we needed 2,500 units under the previous plan. Now, we've increased industrial growth by 2 million square feet. They're going to require more than that. We can count on that pretty much. I don't think this is a case of the state beating up on the city of Cupertino. If you're going to generate a need for almost 10,000 housing units, they're going to have to live someplace. I think it's the obligation of the city, creating that need, to at least assure that somewhere nearby, there's going to be housing for those people.
Thank you. Okay, now it's time for question number three, and the first person to answer will be Stephen Hayes. The question reads, "What can be done to make our city safer and to diminish the potential for violent crimes?"
This is endemic not only to Cupertino, but to many of the surrounding communities, where in the past, they have not experienced such a high level of crime. I've taken a look at the county sheriff's activity reports for 1992 and 1993 to date, and it shows upward trend in the number of incidents. It was indicated that even our schools are not safe. We went from last year, one incident of weapons on campus, to 23 to date. What we need to do is look at what is the causes for crime? Is it because of the fact that there's unemployment? Is it because of the fact that parents, two parents, are working? The question is, is what is causing crime? Well, there's also spillover from cities such as San Jose. Recently, the Taco Bell's hours were curtailed, and that was based on the sheriff's department's recommendation. It used to be 24-hour operation. We need to be always looking and scrutinizing to see where are the hotspots in our community and ensure that we maintain a very strong presence there with our sheriff's department.
All right. Laura Lee Sorenson.
I think the city has been proactive in looking at crime. Three years ago, we started the youth probation officer program within our -- for our juveniles within the city. This program is a partnership program with the sheriff's department, the probation department, Fremont Union High School District, and Cupertino Union School District, wherein we have a probation officer who is stationed in the city of Cupertino. This gentleman, whose name is Terry Mullin, receives all citations on any youth that commits any sort of a crime. Obviously, if it's a violent crime, the children will be -- or the youth would be taken to the juvenile probation department. Terry then works with these children and works with them so that they are diverted out of the system. out of the system. It's been a highly successful program to date. The other program that we are talking about, and again, I'm addressing youth because a lot of our crime statistics seem to come from youth, at least the ones that I read in the paper and in the crime reports, is a zero tolerance policy. And zero tolerance is something that the schools and the city will be addressing. Zero tolerance means we will not accept weapons in our schools and in our area here. And I think that this will be forthcoming to the council in a very short time. And there are weapons in the schools. As Stephen said, there were 23 incidences last year at Fremont Union High School District.
Thank you. John Batista.
Well, I think we need to continue to fund and make a priority of these kinds of programs, the zero tolerance program. We also need to work closely with the sheriff's department, coordinate efforts between neighborhood watch programs and the sheriff's department. I think these are particular programs that can help us curtail some of the crime effects. But overall, I think changing Cupertino into a denser environment with higher density housing, and I'm going to continue to say this over and over again tonight, is...brings us into a new realm. It brings urban problems. And I think that, you know, that's the road I want to make sure we don't go down. The second point is, we've got to make sure that Cupertino looks like a community that doesn't tolerate this kind of activity. Simple things like, let's get the graffiti off the freeway walls as soon as possible before more arrives. It's that kind of...a community that has self-respect, a community that says, no, we're not going to take it anymore, that we're going to stand up and fight and make sure that we don't turn into that kind of environment. That's what I want to make...and that's what the residents want and that's what I'm going to make sure is implemented and happens. Thanks.
Thank you. Don Burnett.
Thank you. I think the subject's been covered awfully well so far and Laura Lee's program sounds like really an excellent one to me. And I'm glad to see that it is working as well as it is. What I think in terms of preventing crime, what the city can do, if you can try and create a climate in the city where people have pride in the city and where the youth feel that their needs are being met, somehow if you can reach the people and make them feel like they're part of what's going on in the city, you'll get a reduction in crime. And I think, you know, keeping our recreation programs going, I think making the city safer for pedestrians and bicycles so the kids can get out and associate with one another and move about, I think these things will all help in trying to keep the rate of crime down. It's a nationwide problem. I hope we can do something for it and cut it off at the pass. I think zero tolerance is absolutely essential in the city.
Thank you. Marshall Goldman.
Well, I think the first thing that we need to do is when Taco Bell wanted to compromise with us and extend their hours still on Friday and Saturdays to 1 o'clock, we should have turned them down. I mean, I don't think there...I tried as hard as I could to get the rest of my colleagues to just forget it. There was no reason to compromise with Taco Bell. The safety of our kids is too much, but that was not successful. In fact, I...one of the things I said is, we are...we don't want to take it anymore. I agree. It's a very serious problem. We have some...we've heard some programs that are addressing it, but I think it has to be raised to a little bit higher level. I think the mayor should convene a task force composed of the sheriff and the schools and the citizens and set a specific timetable for proactive programs that will address the issue of crime. We have a problem with our kids. I have kids in high school and last year, one of their classmates was murdered. I think that's a very serious problem and I think it needs to be addressed immediately before it gets out of hand. The other point is, after we get rid of all the businesses, as some of the programs might happen, when we're going to get rid of all the businesses, how are we going to pay for the police and how are we going to pay for the parks and how are we going to pay for the services? I think you have to think a little bit ahead in terms of what type of climate you want to have in Cupertino. I think that's a very serious problem.
Thank you. Okay, the next question, we're going to start with Laura Lee Sorenson. And the question reads, what do you feel would be a good solution or compromise regarding the diocese's property?
The diocese's property...in the general plan, we voted on the diocese's property for 41 units to be built there. This is what is in the general plan. It has been under litigation. We have met in closed session in regard to the diocese's property and I am not going to divulge what we talked about in closed session because I think that that's inappropriate and it's something that the law says that we shouldn't do. You know what my vote is. I stand by my vote. I...recently, the council agreed to let the diocese come forward with plans. The council said that they could have an environmental impact report done. And on...in doing this, we, as the council and the planning commission, will be able to look at the environmental impact report once it is completed. And that would be, say, for 200 units, 190, 180, 170, on down to zero. And then a decision would be made on what is best. But at the present time, at this time, right now, I stand by what my vote was in the council for the general plan.
Thank you. John Batista.
My feeling about the diocese's property and the controversy there is that we need to settle that issue in City Hall and not in court. And I'm not convinced that the current road that we're going down is one that will allow for a settlement in City Hall. Unfortunately, city council has backed itself into a corner. It's a corner where they're hung up on a number of units, 40 units. Well, I think that we need to step back and ask ourselves, what really is our interest? What is the interest of the community and the property? And the interest, in my opinion, is preserving as much open space as possible for the long term. And in order to do that, we need to negotiate with the diocese. By negotiating, we can get something that we can't otherwise get with the hillside policy that, in fact, is subject to the whims of any city council. Four, eight, 12 years from now, you can have a pro-development city council that can change a general plan. We saw that we had a general plan that was passed by 3 to 2. Well, it can similarly be amended by 3 to 2. So the church is working toward and has made a lot of effort in reducing its numbers toward a negotiated settlement. I want to make sure that whatever we can get in terms of open space, that goes into private hands or the county with deed restrictions so that it's forever open space. If we had negotiated that when the forum was built, this issue would never have arisen. But it will continue...that property will continue to be developed parcel after parcel until it's in permanent hands outside the diocese.
Thank you. Donald Burnett.
I also agree that a negotiated solution with permanent dedication of open spaces is what I want to see for that property. An important aspect of that property that hasn't been emphasized enough, I think, is that prior to the building of the forum, the general plan called for 400 housing units on the diocese's property. And the forum itself contains 410 units of housing, you know? Part of it is single rooms, but there are 410 housing units there. So the diocese has already achieved a certain amount of development and ability to derive value from that land. And I think that should be a factor in whatever's done. Beyond that, I'd like to reiterate that whatever solution does come up should be acceptable environmentally in terms of traffic and the school impact. I think those things need to be planned very carefully. I think we need to look very carefully at the size of the houses that are built to see that they're appropriate as well.
Thank you. Marshall Goldman.
Okay, first of all, with respect to plans that are being submitted by the diocese, I don't think we should rush the judgment on these things. Once the buildings are built, it's forever. So when I hear negotiation, it's...I start to worry about that because in 1986, we had a planning commission that negotiated with the diocese and it turned out that they gave them 400 units and gave them credit for only 107. And that act increased the density by 293 units. Then, we had a planning commission that approved 490 units during the general plan process. So I mean, if you keep raising the number of units, sure, a compromise starts to look closer and closer to maybe what they wanted to begin with. I mean, we have to look at the history before we start negotiating this thing. Secondly, the other real important issue is, what you need to know is, as soon as I got on the council, the Kaiser people came in with a proposal for 3,000 units. Now, they're looking at the strength or weakness of this city council. And if we negotiate the hillside protection policy because we're afraid to go to court or we're afraid of something this or that, they're going to take that as a precedent and then we're going to have another problem, which will be Kaiser. And after Kaiser, we'll have another and another and another. I mean, I don't think people want to build out the last remaining open space in Cupertino.
Thank you. Stephen Hayes.
Just as a point of information, back in 1990, I was one of the primary founders and the first chair for Oaks, who had initiated the effort to preserve St. Joseph's Seminary as open space. I support the basic tenants of the hillside protection policy. And to me, it's non-negotiable as far as 10% development envelope and 90% retained as open space. What I would like to see is flexibility built into that. And that is, that it is negotiable based on environmental review on the number of units. To me, it's more important, in that 10% envelope, to have economic viability and incentives for the landowner. And we're talking about the San Jose Arch Diocese than it is to have it held in private ownership and like it was indicated, that a future council can overturn it and, as a result, allow for subsequent development. My preference is to get it preserved as private open space and transferred immediately to an agency such as MidPen or the county park system.
Thank you. Okay, we'll go on to the next question and we're going to start with John Batista. The question reads, do you support a property transfer tax and why or why not?
I'm not opposed to a property transfer tax. I think it's an important source of revenue to the city. I think it has to be reasonable and...but we have to look at all...it's not uncommon to have a property transfer tax. We need to look at a variety of ways to increase city revenues. Just wanted to, on this question, say that, you know, the Kaiser property is not subject to the hillside policy and it's outside. It's county property. It's not city property.
All right. Don Burnett.
Let's see, I forgot the question.
I'll repeat the question for you. Do you support a property transfer tax and why or why not?
Property transfer tax. Yes, property transfer tax. I believe we already have one in the city of Cupertino. And the question is, do we raise the fee? I would...I'm very reluctant to raise that fee and make it more difficult for people, you know, add another cost to people selling their homes. The amount of money that was quoted as a potential to be raised from that tax, to me, was not sufficient to justify the problem it would create for people selling their houses.
Thank you. Marshall Goldman.
Well, I think the issue is whether or not we're going to need the money. Now, in the last four years, we've maintained our reserves even in a recession. And I think we've done a very good job in managing our money. And I kind of checked up on how much these companies that, by the way, we're going to get rid of the industrial growth and we're going to get rid of all the benefits that they have, participate. They give us about $2.7 million a year in taxes. Now, when we go back to this residential community, that this idyllic vision that some of us may have, we're going to have to come up with a way to fund that $2.7 million a year in taxes. And so we're not going to be just looking at the property transfer tax. We're going to be looking at a lot of taxes or some very severe cutsbacks in services. I don't think that's a balanced way to do things or I don't think it's reasonable. The other...the other thing is, what's amazing is, again, I keep hearing we're going to negotiate the homes on the diocese's property, which is going to be a net loss to us in income, but we don't want to negotiate with the major companies to keep them here in Cupertino. And to me, I got...I don't know where that is. That seems to be the wrong balance. I think that we need the jobs. I think that we need to find ways to control the growth, but to maintain the income that we have. Otherwise, transfer tax is going to be the least of our worries.
Thank you. Steve Hayes.
I'm adamantly opposed to any type of transfer tax. The cost of homes today is well out of the reach of most people. And what also concerns me about the transfer taxes, it goes into the general fund. It's not assigned. So where will the money go? We have to look at ways to have strong fiscal management and government. As a matter of fact, what I've proposed is that there be a reward system to an employee, a non-managerial employee in city government. That comes up with ways of saving money. We have to look at innovative ways, new ways of taking and controlling spending. Transfer tax, at this time, the way the economy is impacting us, sends out the wrong message.
Thank you. Laura Lee Sorenson.
Okay. The property transfer tax was tried about a year ago and at that time, the council tabled it. I don't see it coming back in the future. I tend to agree with what has been said before. We need to look for other ways to raise money. And I don't feel that the transfer tax is the way to do it. Our operating budget, to talk a little bit about the budget, our operating budget within the city has been in balance for the last four years. When people talk about a million dollars that we've gone into the reserves, what we've done with this is we've put aside money to save for capital improvements. If we choose not to do the capital improvements, these reserves will remain there. It's sort of like a savings account that you save to buy, say, a refrigerator that you need. And you keep putting aside a certain amount of money until it's time to take care of this. And this is what we've done. So we have not been out of sync on our budget at all. The other thing is that we have...that 30-second sign is distracting. We need to take a long look at the economy and look toward economic development within the city so that we can bring more income in the way of sales tax into the city.
Thank you. Okay, for the next question, we have a couple...actually, there's a couple of facts and then we'll go into questions. And Don Burnett, you'll be answering first. So here we go. The library budget is cut by 40% this year. Library hours are reduced significantly. Question number one, what do you plan to solve...no, I'll give that to you again. What do you plan to do to solve the library crisis? And secondly, how do you balance different needs?
What I would propose to do actually is seriously consider using city funds to keep the library open larger. Some of that's been done already. There's a task force, the library commission is...has a task force to try and get outside funding, to try and see if maybe these companies can help us out and keep our library open. The amount required to do it is a drop in the bucket compared to the money that they deal with. I think that the library needs a higher priority than it's gotten. I think, you know, if the library cut back that severely, when we spend a quarter of a million dollars, again, for the tan bark instead of the turf, or for the turf instead of the tan bark in Little Leake Spectator areas, and then recently, there was another $200,000 to landscape parts of the field that could have been left simply with a mulch cover. At this time, I think that I would like to see a shift in emphasis toward the library. I think that's...this is a community of...that's built on intellectual achievement. The library is a cornerstone of that. We should do everything we can to keep it open.
Okay. Marshall Goldman.
Well, there is a way to solve the library problem. Take it out of the hands of the county. I mean, the problem that we have is that the property owners in Cupertino right now... right now contribute way in excess of what it would cost to run that library. But because we have an old formula that we agreed to a long time ago, we are actually subsidizing libraries throughout the rest of the county. And when we could have our full services, that might have been okay. But now, I think, when Cupertino's interests are at heart, I think we have to defend Cupertino. And I think we can do that by getting back our share of our property taxes. We did create some innovative programs. We have a matching program, the city council funded on a one-time basis, some increases in the library. That doesn't go far enough. I think we need to have a long-term solution. We're working towards that. I really get a kick out of how we're going to go ask the companies to fund the library after we've eliminated all their future growth. I mean, that's going to be an interesting discussion. I'd like to see that take place. I don't think there's much likelihood of that happening. I think this all goes back to the fact that we have to have a balance between the jobs, and the neighborhoods, and the open space. It's a dynamic balance. It's something that we have to make sure we can control what we're doing, that it doesn't impact us severely. But at the same time, we can't forget that we need all aspects of the community in order to move forward for the future. And I think the library is a priority. I think we can solve it in the next year. That's one of the things that I would work towards doing in the next four years.
Thank you. Stephen Hayes.
Well, I'm pleased to hear that the council is now involved in the process to try to help out the library. Initially, I was disappointed because of two reasons. One was that it was recommended by staff that we send a message back to Sacramento. Unfortunately, that message would have hurt our children as well, and that was not to do anything. That it was Sacramento's responsibility. Secondly, I sent a telegram to Governor Pete Wilson requesting that he immediately sign, without any unnecessary delay, Senate Bill 566, which would have allowed us, here locally, to establish a local assessment, and as Mr. Goldman indicated, regain control of our library. Now, that was vetoed by the governor, I believe it was yesterday. And as a result, now, we've gotten a message again from Sacramento. Now, when we talked about the transfer tax, that's something that the council could have voted on without the will of the people being involved. When we talk about the library and an assessment, then that's something that can be put on the local ballot, and us as citizens, if the library is important, then we would vote in favor of it on a simple majority basis.
Thank you. Laura Lee Sorenson.
We spent two evenings talking about the library, and we ultimately dipped into our reserves to the tune of $55,000 to help the library out until June 30th. And this was what the Library Commission had requested that we do. At the same time, we asked that a library task force be formed, and our city manager is to head this up. And the major issues that this task force is to look at are the financial, the legal, the political, and the logistical. And we asked that the city manager report back to us as soon as possible, and I know that he will do this. We also asked the Library Commission to try and go out and raise funding on their own for the library, and try to match the $55,000 that we had given them. And I really hope that they're successful. I know that they've had one anonymous donor already give $10,000. So, if any of you feel like you want to support a worthy cause, please, please support the library. They need it right now. Interestingly enough, I was concerned about the library last July, because I was looking at it from a different aspect, in that the library is so well-used, it is absolutely incredible to go over there. If you haven't gone over on a weekday or a weekend, you really should. It is still well-used, even with the cutback in hours. When we restored the hours, it allowed the library to restore four hours and to buy $15,000 worth of materials, because -- oops.
Thank you. Sorry. Out of town.
That's the 30-second one.
Okay. John Batista.
Well, I agree. We need to support the library. A cutback in hours means not only that the library's not open, but it also means the hours during which the library opens, it's not a library, it's a bookstore, because there's so many people in there who are using it during those small periods of time. But I really question a budgetary system that allocates $5.4 million in capital improvements in an agreement with the schools over the next four years, and the priorities that that establishes. And, you know, where do we stand in the library system? I think we need to also recognize that the library is an important element of our community, and be willing to stand behind it, at the same time, pursuing long-term solutions at the state level or county level. We also need to look for ways to increase revenues in Cupertino. We have, as mentioned, been running an account where current revenues equal operating expenses, but that really puts the overall picture of the budget behind a curtain. And what's really happening is, we have capital expenditures of a million dollars per year, which leads to a deficit. Now, you know, we've had a savings account, like a household savings account, and we've borrowed from that savings account. But like any good household, we need a plan to replenish that savings account, and that's also an important factor.
Thank you. Okay, this is going to be the last question, and we're going to start with Marshall Goldman.
Uh-oh. Jeez. I hate those first starts. I mean, that's -- I think that's unfair, but I'll do it.
Okay, good. Good. Here we go. "What traffic mitigation programs would you support, if elected?"
Okay. Well, what we've done is, number one, for the 3 million square feet that's been allocated to the companies, not 5 million, by the way, for the 3 million square feet, which is 2% a year, they have to maintain their existing traffic in their companies before they can expand. So, we've created some programs that restrict them from expanding unless they actually reduce their traffic first. And if they don't reduce it, they don't get any growth. Number one. Secondly, I think we need to utilize Highway 85 a little bit better to get the commuters off of our streets, and get more local traffic on our streets. When I believe that one of the big problems in Cupertino is you've got these huge freeways, Stevens Creek Boulevard and Deans Boulevard crisscrossing it, and nobody can get from one neighborhood to the other. I mean, my wife can't get to, you know, babysitting or whatever, or ballet. I mean, it's unbelievable. And I think that really is planning that is old. And I think what we need to do is utilize the opening of Highway 85, utilize light rail, so that we have locally oriented traffic on Stevens Creek Boulevard, and commuter traffic on the freeways. I think there are practical ways to do that, and that's one of the things I'd like to work for in the next four years.
Thank you. Stephen Hayes.
One of the things I've experienced for about five years is hearing the water theory. Now, if you've had an opportunity to come to City Hall, it gets rather interesting when we talk about traffic circulation and the Director of Public Works' water theory. And I think it doesn't hold water. Okay? I think there's a big leak here. And the reason is, when I met with him, I asked him about Highway 85, and what are the opportunities? What are we doing to take advantage of it? We're going to have this freeway coming into our town, literally splitting us, physically splitting us. There has to be advantage. Right now, 25% of the traffic we see on Deans and Stevens Creek during commute hours, according to the Director of Public Works, is through traffic, out-of-town commuter traffic using our streets. Now, the theory is, you open up Highway 85, where's all that out-of-town traffic supposed to go? Onto Highway 85, right? Well, he says, "Just for a little while." Okay, so there's a window of opportunity. We need to do something. Rainbow Drive is a good example of this. It's going to take traffic from San Jose and put it onto North Deans, heading north. There is no way for a resident from San Jose to stay off of our local streets and go onto Highway 85. And you ask yourself, you know, we can put a man on the moon, but we can't find a way to get the traffic on the Highway 85.
Thank you. Laura Lee Sorenson.
Thank you. Traffic mitigation is covered in the general plan, and that's already been discussed this evening. I think other things that people need to be aware of is that we have a Clean Air Act that is both state and federally mandated, which is going to force us to do something about our traffic, whether we like it or not. We also have the Metropolitan Transportation Commission. This is going to force us to do something about our traffic in the local Bay Area, throughout the Bay Area. We also have the opportunity, when Highway 85 opens, and one of the things that the council discussed at their goal-setting last January was, after Highway 85 opens, that we do a traffic study throughout Cupertino, and possibly even bring in somebody from the outside to look at the traffic and the traffic flow patterns. We have a lot of streets that right now have what they call pork chops on them, you know, where you can't turn left or get out of a neighborhood. And I think that, once 85 is opened, and if we see if there is any decrease in the traffic upon our streets, then it's time to look at it. And you're shaking your head, and I tend to agree with you. I don't think we're going to see a decrease of traffic on our streets when this happens. But I think we need to look at it.
Thank you. John Batista.
Let's talk about the general plan and what traffic mitigation program is in there. What the general plan says is that companies will make efforts to reduce traffic. In demonstrating their efforts in reducing current traffic levels, then they'll be able to expand current space. But there's no teeth in that policy. Once a building is built, if a company decides to increase the number of employees in the building, the city is really left with very little it can do. And again, it's not an ironclad policy. My feeling is, the way to cut back on traffic is to cut back on the amount of industrial development in our city. I am not a no-growth candidate. I think we need to allow the companies to expand. But I believe that a 50% increase in office space is excessive. I don't believe that that's what the major companies are demanding. In fact, Apple Computer is looking at 130 acres in San Antonio. Clearly, its needs can't be met in Cupertino. In addition, traffic is a very serious problem, because it requires us to maintain certain level of service standards at intersections. And when traffic dips below those standards, the city is required to put into place mitigation measures, and that has a direct fiscal impact. It means widening bridges, it means dealing with intersections. So, we need to control traffic, because it will have a direct impact on our budget.
Thank you. Don Burnett.
Yes, I also agree that the best way to reduce traffic is to reduce the industrial growth. I'm not a zero-growth candidate either, and I don't think there's any way that these companies are going to be driven out of Cupertino by policies I advocate. There's enormous amount of growth, over 2 million square feet allocated to the big three companies, before the 2 million bonus that was granted in June. I've heard the Director of Public Works say several times, "It doesn't matter whether we build this or not, because we're going to get the traffic anyway, because it will be built somewhere else." I don't believe that for a minute. And the reason I don't believe that is that if the expansion isn't here, the expansion will be probably in someplace either out of the state, or say, someplace like North San Jose. North San Jose is much closer to potential housing than we are here. What this means is that people who work there and have housing close by have shorter commutes. So, we have a better regional situation, if the growth is set there than if it is here. Beyond that, I'd like to address my favorite subject, which is bicycling. And I feel that the city can be made much more friendly to bicycling, and encourage more people to commute by bicycle. I see a lot more people doing it, it seems, all the time. And currently, a tremendous number of the employees at our local companies live within five miles of work, because they're here now and the housing is here. So, they'll be close, and that's a potential bicycle commute. And I think we have potential to do that.
Thank you. All right, now it's time for closing statements. The candidates, you have a minute each, and I will start with Laura Lee Sorenson.
Okay, thank you. I want to address one thing that has come up several times this evening, and that is the $4.8 million that was allocated to the schools for the improvement of the sports fields at the schools. This was a promise that was made when Measure T was passed several years ago, and the council has abided by the promise, and we've promised to fix the sports fields. I also want to comment that a lot of what we've talked about, all of us have talked about tonight, can be achieved through partnerships between city government, business, and schools. And we count on the strong sense of community in Cupertino. I believe that my role as the consensus builder, mediator on the council is needed. I proved that that was what my role was a year ago, when I was mayor. I believe that a community that works right, works for everyone. I've proven that I can work towards this end, and would ask for your support in November. Again, I would like to thank the League for the opportunity for me to present my views here this evening.
Thank you. Stephen Hayes.
I would like to thank each and every one of you for taking time from your busy lives to come here to meet with us. I hope that we have addressed your issues and your concerns, those that are most important to you. I also want to point out that I believe that we are at a point of economic uncertainty, and it has been recently been proven, not only in the newspapers with the recently announced layoffs at Tandem and Apple. So, I don't see a gold rush, or let's say, a land rush at City Hall at this time. Leadership is situational. You have to be flexible. We have lost, to date, since 1980, approximately 8,000 jobs. So, growth is not the issue at this time. It is actually economic rejuvenation or revitalization that's important. And we need to remember that there's three main companies, three major employers, but the majority of the businesses in our community are small businesses.
Thank you. Marshall Goldman.
Well, I hope it has been informative. I don't know what role -- I don't know how I would characterize my role in the council, but I would say that I've tried to work for a balanced approach. I tried to work for a balanced approach for Cupertino, and I think that we've developed a lot of consensus-based solutions, starting from the vision statement to the general plan. The general plan, everybody has had time to input in it, and it really is a compromise. I think that, if you listen today, jobs are very important. We can't, you know, it's not just the income that we receive from jobs, it's also the fact that we have jobs. And what I'm concerned about is if we, you know, that we need to continue on a balanced approach that protects our jobs, protects our neighborhoods, and protects our open space. We can develop a consensus in this community that's very strong, very powerful, and Cupertino can be and should be the model for the rest of the Bay Area.
Thank you. Don Burnett.
I'd like to also thank you all for coming. I think it's been very informative for me to hear everybody, and the exchange of opinions. Again, I'm not a no-growth candidate. I think growth should be based on the real needs of the company, and not, as I see it, a basic grab to try and maximize the value of real estate holdings, which is what I think the $2 million really comprised. I want a general plan that has a vision of the future that I can look forward to and say, "That's a place I want to live." And I don't feel that way about this general plan. Dense urban environment, talk about how long it's going to happen, that's not the right fork in the road for us right now. I don't believe it. And I guess, November 2nd, we'll find out what all the voters think about it. Thank you.
Thank you. John Batista.
Well, I think we have some tough decisions to make. I believe that we have struck the wrong balance. I think the amount of growth is excessive. I think we need to find ways to keep the major employers in Cupertino. A lot of it is out of our control, however. They're leaving because of high housing prices, or the high cost of living in the area. But we have also imposed a lot of conditions on these companies that we should take a second look at as well. For example, requiring them to get into the business of building houses. Now, if we're really concerned about keeping them here, let's address that issue. Let's find a way to accommodate their reasonable growth needs. But finally, I think the important thing, and this is probably the most important thing I took when I graduated from law school, is the importance of representing the people. And as a council member, it's of utmost importance to me to represent the views of the citizens of Cupertino. And I've been walking around and knocking on doors, and I want to continue to do that. Please give me a chance.
Thank you very much. This concludes the Candidates Forum. I'd like to thank you all for coming. I'd also like to thank the AAUW and my fellow League members for helping us out. And most of all, let's give a special round of applause to the candidates for participating in this. Please remember to vote on November 2nd. Thank you for coming. Good night. Good night.